Good evening, everyone.
All right, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners' regular call business meeting is now called to order. The date is May 20th, 2025, and the time is 6:00 PM. All right, we will next do roll call District 1.
Here.
District 3.
Present.
District 2.
Here.
And District 4.
Present.
All right, great. Next, we'll move on into our invocation. Our invocation tonight will be by Pastor Sabra Skidmore of Chapel of Jonesboro. And following our invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. Would you please stand for our invocation? And welcome, Pastor Skidmore.
Thank you. Father, we thank you for this night. We thank you for everyone who has gathered here together, Lord, to express their feelings, perhaps make decisions that would make Clayton County a better place. I pray your blessing on each one of our commissioners, on each person that sits on the board. Father, I ask that you would anoint the ears to listen, to understand, and not just to respond. I pray that your direction, your wisdom will be present in this place. And in all this, we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Before we adopt our agenda, board members, I would like to pull Item 19 from the regular agenda. And we discussed at our work session that we would allow Ms. Clemens to come at our next work session, which will be on June 10th. And then possibly a vote will be done based on what the board would like to do on June 17th. So at this time, I've made a motion to again pull Item 19. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. End discussion at this time.
Yes, I have a question for the attorney. So June 10th is also the scheduled date for the budget hearing. Is that correct, or?
The Budget Committee, once we meet again and discuss the calendar, it's not completely set yet that it's going to be June 10th.
All right. Will that interfere if June 10th is the scheduled budget hearing date while having a presentation? Will that interfere?
No.
No. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions at this time, board members? Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. All right, at this time, we will move to adopt the agenda. Does any board members have any items that they'd like to move to the regular agenda?
Yes.
All right, what number would you like to move, Commissioner Reeves?
I would like to move Item 13 and Item 16 from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
You said 13 and 15?
Uh...
16.
13 and 16.
I'm sorry, 16, all right. 13 and 16. All right. All right, at this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So who?
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, end discussion at this time. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right, any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next will be Item 5, Presentations and Proclamations. Our first presentation would be the SPOS update by DCOO Landry Murkison.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. So this isn't really so much a presentation, it's just a couple of questions I have so I can understand kind of how to move forward. So as you know, we've been working on putting together the 2026 SPOS referendum. And as I've started meeting with the cities and getting their project list together, there's a couple of questions that you as a board need to kind of give us some clarification on because it's going to affect not only the call for presentations or projects from the cities, but also the overall funding mechanism. So step one of that is going to be if there is the will of the board to have a Level 1 project in this SPOS. So just to clarify what a Level 1 project is, so a Level 1 project is a countywide project. They are limited to the following. It can be a courthouse, an administrative building for elected officials or constitutional officers, a county or regional jail, correction institution, or detention facility, a county health department facility, or any combination of the foregoing. And why this is important that we understand if there will be a Level 1 project is because those funds come off the top of the projected collections for the entire SPOS. So depending on the dollar value of that Level 1 project, it can take a substantial portion, if not all, of the SPOS, depending on what that is. So that's a question that we need answered so that we can figure out how to move forward with call for projects so we know what to bring back before the board. That's question one.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the...
Commissioner Hambrich.
List that you have given. You say a county health department?
Yes, ma'am, a county health department facility.
Would that be also, would that be the state?
It would be a county health department facility, and however we determine that.
Okay.
So if that's a...
Because what we have now is the state, right? We just have it here in town.
Right, but it's the Clayton Health District. So while there's state funding and stuff, and like the building there, and now is a county facility.
Right.
So it's... It could be a wide variety of things.
Just wanted to clear.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions on question one? All right, question two is obviously Marty, Director Matarco, and myself, along with our municipal partners, are putting the project list together. We're using basically an escalation factor of around 3% to 4% based off the last two total SPOS collections. The last two SPOS have been divvied up per the lost negotiated rates in the SDS is how we divvied that out. So that's kind of how we're moving forward. The question becomes, given the somewhat contracted timeline that we have to get the referendum called for by the August meeting, was how did the board wish to handle the committee? In years past, the most recent 21 SPOS, there was a citizens committee put together by the board. It was chaired, I think, by the COO. And we presented the projects to them, and then we moved forward based off that. In the '09 SPOS, I believe it was done, and the '04, I believe it was done through a resolution. But that was done about two years in advance. So we don't really have that kind of time. So right now, because we're trying to get these projects done, I just wanted to kind of understand if you want us to get our list done and bring that to either a board meeting for an open discussion, or a work session, or what was the will of the board so I make sure I'm moving in accordance with your direction.
Are there any questions at this time, board members?
When do you want your answers?
The sooner the better. Because we are really behind, kind of, we're going into the end of May now. And like I said, I have to have the approved project list to you guys no later than the August 5th board meeting because that's, I think, the Board of Elections meets the next day, and that's when they'll have to call for the referendum. Based off the statutory meeting requirements, we have to have our mandatory meeting with the cities, or I have to provide them notification in mid-June. So we're moving quickly. But I have been in contact with all of our municipal partners. They've given us their points of contact. So now it's just a matter of trying to give them an idea of dollar value, which is where that Level 1 project comes in, as to what they can kind of cut their list down to. So in whatever format y'all would like to do that is fine with me. I just kind of want to let you know what I need to know to move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions at this time, board members? All right, next, we will have presentation update on the Sheriff's Audit. DCOO Landry Murkison.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, once again. So today is a continuation of the BOC Sheriff Audit update that I started at the last board meeting. And this is, of course, in response to the budget amendment that was provided to the sheriff back in April for the additional funding. And with kind of the secondary request for that came a request from the board to look at a few different items. And we'll kind of cover those items again tonight. So one thing I did want to start with is just thanking the Audit Committee, who's been helping us with this. As I said earlier, it's made up of Human Resources, internal audit, finance, and the Office of the COO. Together, those working have over 93 years of government experience, master's degrees in the areas you've seen. And we do have certified internal auditors and certified fraud examiners on the team that are housed at internal audit. So as we move forward with our audit points, in the email that went out to the sheriff, we've been looking at overtime usage, accounts controlled by the sheriff, where funding is not allocated through the general fund, and then potential sources of income that are required to be remitted to the county. And we'll talk about why all these are important. So as it relates directly to overtime usage, so the documents that I requested on April 8th, 2025 were as follows. A current and complete roster of all office personnel, whether civilian or sworn, to include the following employee number, name, and current assignment. The current attendance policy governed overtime and callback procedures, and current time clocking or tracking policy and/or procedures. So why those become key and important as we're looking at overtime? And I know one of the things that Commissioner Davis brought up was he would like to see a breakdown in detail of how the overtime was assigned. So that's what I've completed in the first 22 slides tonight. But I will go quick, so don't... I will be brief, but...
Chief has been told already.
I want it to be thorough. So why is this important? So when we look at how time is entered into the county system, okay? So what you're looking at is an employee time record out of Kronos. And to your left, you can see his timestamp. So this was beginning on the 12th and running through the end of this week. So you can kind of see the times that are coming in. You see the type, which is called add punch, and you see the times are all different. 7:56, 5, 8:01, 5, 7:55, 5. So there's various times this employee is coming and going. If you look to your far right, you'll kind of see where it gives you the end date, the end time. Obviously, we've blacked out the employee names. But the important is the data source. And in this data source, you see it says timestamp. That means that this employee is doing one of two things. They're either swiping in with their county-issued badge that all employees are given, or they're using the Kronos web application on their desktop computer, or they're using the app. And one of those devices, they're actually logging in and timestamping it, which is why you see they clocked in at 7:53 this morning. And there's not another punch out because I did this before they left at 5:00 today. But this is real time, and this kind of shows you. So under normal conditions and normal time clocking procedures, you can kind of follow an employee when they came to work, when they left work, et cetera, throughout the work week. As we started looking at a lot of the overtime usage in the sheriff's office, this is what we see. So this is an employee for the same time period. And you can see there's no in, there's no outs. There's a schedule listed, and the little red boxes you see are what's called exceptions. So that's Kronos telling you that there's data missing. And in this particular case, it's a punch in or a punch out. So this employee, from the 12th, the 13th, 14th, all the way through today, don't know when they came to work, don't know when they left work, because it's not being clocked throughout. And the rules are a little bit different between exempt employees and non-exempt. But for all intents and purposes, IT put out a memo, I think, back in January that said that all employees, non-exempt and part-time, should be using the time clocking system to gauge their time. So in this particular case, there's no documentation that's being shown. So we backed it up two weeks and looked at the two-week period preceding that one because there's no data there. And now you can kind of start to see where all of the information's been put in. And they're clocking it about 12 hours a day, 12 and 1/2, 12, 12 and 1/2, 12, 12 and 1/2. But all the times are consistent, right? It's either 6:30 to 7, 6:30 to 7:30, and the like. So when we look at this and you see the red boxes, once again, they're exceptions that's telling you that the times that are clocked are outside of the employee's normal work schedule. So what we would look to see is comments as to why the overtime was there, or how, you know, this work schedule was being calculated and computed. So we move forward to the audit trail. So within Kronos, at the bottom of a time card, is an audit trail that logs every move that's done in Kronos. So for this particular employee, if you look at it, you can kind of see the dates to your left, the time, the type where it says add punch. And then you notice the override column where it says out punch, out punch, out punch. Now, this is the bottom end of this audit. So if I was able to capture the whole thing for the screen, you would see in punch overrides and then out punch overrides. And then to the far right, you see the end time. You see the end date is all the same date. And then, of course, we've blocked out the username. And then the key box is looking at the data source. So when you look at the data source, it says time card editor. It's not using a system clocking, which means all this time was manually entered. And the person who manually entered it is underneath that black box. So in this particular instance, the interesting thing is one person entered all the time manually, a different person made some edits to it toward the end of the pay period, and then a third party signed off on it. So at no point did the actual employee review their record, enter their time, or approve their time. So it was all done by alternative personnel and third parties. So, and this is just kind of one example of how we see the amount of overtime that will go through kind of in the next slides being generated. And these types of time cards are common and are recurrent. But it's important to kind of understand why we requested the policies because we understand that every division and department has different policies based on how they operate. So we want to understand how does the sheriff's office currently handle timekeeping and time clocking so we can understand the time reports a little bit better. So moving on to calendar year 2024 and 2025, and I want to make sure that I focus on calendar year. It was much easier to process the data and get this done quickly for y'all looking at the calendar year because we're not having to split budgets, and we're not having to kind of handle the year split. So for calendar year 2024, total number of overtime hours used was 152,906. There was a total of 471 employees that charged overtime. 114 or 24% had over 500 hours. One employee had over 2,000 hours. 16 with 1,000, 17 with over 900, for a total dollar amount of 5.539 million and some change. So look forward to calendar year 2025. So we're looking at one pay period shy of being through half the year. So this is a little bit less than half of what we would expect to see looking at the total charges for 2025. So 393 employees, 58,000 hours. And you see the breakdown there, total dollar amount year-to-date, 2.198 million. And this was ran as of May 16th. So this was the pay period that we just finished up. So we wanted to make sure that we had the most recent data. So now, as we start to kind of move through overtime usage by grouping, and if anytime y'all have a question, please stop me and ask me because I'm going to move through this kind of quickly to kind of get through the presentation. But what I've done is I've gone through the active employee roster that was provided both by Human Resources and Finance. We took the two and merged them to come up with an accurate account of what's been paid to date. So when you go back to the 2024 and look at the administrative staff of the sheriff's office, they generated 10,250 hours at 382,000. And I've highlighted all the employees that have over 1,000 hours of overtime. Moving forward into this year, and as you can see, this is through May 16th, 2025. We're keeping pace with where we were last year. We're at 3,608 hours at a total dollar amount of $137,174. Moving into the sheriff's finance team. As you can see, for 2024, we're at 2,500 hours, 75,000. You can see the hour breakdown, substantial amount of overtime for administrative personnel. Moving forward into overtime for May, through May of 16th of 2025, you can kind of see we're kind of keeping pace as far as where we were last year if you're just kind of running those numbers out on a per month. The thing that we did note here is that there's two fewer accounting technicians in the 2025 run as opposed to the 2024. There were no positions taken from the organization. They were just reassigned somewhere, which is where, once again, having an accurate roster available would help us kind of understand how the billets are moving and where those folk went. Security specialist grouping, you can see the numbers here. One of the things I want to point out with some of these larger groupings is in this particular case, I've hidden all the overtime hours that totaled between 300 and 10 because they wouldn't fit on a single slide, and I didn't want to give you three slides of the same data. So that's why it kind of jumps. You'll see it goes from 303.5 down to 8.5. I just hid the employees that were kind of in the middle there.
I'm not following you on that.
Okay, so when you look at this chart, if you're coming down the hours column, you can see where it gets to 303.5 hours. And then all of a sudden, you go to 8.5. There's a total of 48 total positions that have overtime that either had 300 hours down to 10. I just hid them from this view so it would all fit on one slide. But I wanted you to see the top end of the spectrum, and what the bottom end, and then your total dollar amounts.
Okay, so this is overtime from January to this point?
This is overtime from January to December 2024. So this was 2024 numbers. This is from January to May of 2025. So same time group, or same group may not necessarily be the same employees as people are moving throughout the organization. But once again, anything between 100 and 10 were hidden so I could fit them here. And you could kind of see here that we're up to 5,617 hours and $149,000. Sheriff Services clerks? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Because you said it's a calendar year. But if it's going to be the calendar year, is that going to, that's going to cross two fiscal years?
It does.
Okay. I'm just trying to follow the hours. Okay.
They're actually a little less if you do it calendar year than if you do it fiscal year, believe it or not. So that's why, that's why I wanted to preface this with we're running it calendar years because we're trying to follow the documentation we have. And so we're trying to make sense of what we've been given to date, which is pretty much what we've been able to find. So we've been running this calendar year just to try to make it easier to consolidate the data in rapid fashion. We can certainly take this and recalculate it to fiscal year. That's not a problem. We can do it. It just sometimes gets a little jumpy.
Okay.
Sheriff Service clerks, again, like I said, I don't want to keep hammering the same topics. But I wanted you to kind of see the breakdown of how it's being accrued. Correctional officers, once again, 15, you see that everything highlighted in an orangey color is over 1,000 hours, and then it just kind of starts breaking down there. And then, of course, we have calculated what the additional dollar amount that equates to that's over and above their normal salaries and wages. Correctional officer time period this year, same amounts. Correctional sergeants, so now we're getting up into rank and file. You can kind of see here, 86, 96 on the hours, nearly $400,000. Correctional sergeants for May of 16th, 35, 30, $161,000. Correctional lieutenants, obviously, the higher we go up, the fewer people, the fewer billets there are. But we're at 4207 and 25 cents, I mean, 25 hours for a total dollar amount of $215,000. Correctional lieutenants, May 16th, 2025, 1,700 hours, $95,000. Looking at our deputy sheriff ones, very few deputy sheriff ones. You can kind of see the amounts there. This is used as an entry-level position into the sheriff's office. This year, there was one fewer deputy sheriff one position. More than likely, that person's already been moved up into the food chain. Deputy sheriffs two, you can kind of see 17,218 hours, $686,000 in overtime. Deputy sheriff two for May of 16th, you can kind of see where we sit with overtime here. So we're at 9365 and $377,341. And the reason that you have these three highlighted in red is while going through some of the personnel records and documents, so these three deputy sheriff twos were reassigned and reallocated to a new unit. So back in September of 2024, the sheriff's office created a ranger unit that kind of functions as hero units. So they look at Highway 85, Terra Boulevard, Jonesboro Road, Highway 138, and provide direct service to stranded motorists by responding to flat tires, dead batteries, lockouts, fuel needs, or coolant needs. So those three people were reassigned to that unit. So they're still deputy sheriffs two, but not performing a function within the jail or what they were previously doing. So that's why those three are highlighted. Once again, that's where the roster would have come in handy so we kind of understand how people are being moved. Deputy sheriff three, 5126 on hours, 231,000 for '24. Looking at May 16th to this year, 2753, 128,000, so still tracking. Sheriff sergeants, 5592 and 293,000. This year, 2622 and 136,000, so we're still tracking. Overtime usage by grouping for sheriff's lieutenants, 5555 and a quarter hour for 302,000. And then looking at sheriff lieutenant for May 16th of 2025, 2196, 75 for $122,172 on this one. So in this particular instance, when we found going through the personnel records, is this, the one that's highlighted in red is actually serving in the role as a captain but is being paid out of the lieutenant? Because once a person transitioned up to the rank of captain, then they're no longer eligible for overtime because they're exempt. So even though this person is filling the role of a captain, they're being paid out of lieutenant's billets. So that's why we highlighted that one in red. Any questions on overtime before we hop into the financial section?
Board members, are there any questions at this time? Commissioner Hambrich?
Yes, will you roll it back? Okay, non-pensionable pension?
So overtime is non-pensionable. So when you generate overtime, it does not equate to your base salaries and wages. Therefore, it's not factored into your pension for retirement. And this is only, let me also clarify this. This is only the 1.5 time and a half non-pensionable overtime. What we haven't calculated yet, we're in the process of doing it, is the callback pay, the ad reg hours that don't equate to overtime, but they're just additional regular hours. So this is a quarter of the equation.
Okay, how does callback time differ from overtime?
So callback pay is used for emergency situations. So you go home for the day, something happens, wherever, you get called back in, right? It's not overtime because your shift has ended. When you get called back in, the county pays you a minimum of three hours when you get called back under callback. Callback per county policy is to be used for emergency purposes only. Something's happened that wasn't planned. Overtime assumes you just never left, right? So I came into work at 8:00, supposed to get off at 5:00, I stayed till 10:00. That's overtime. If I go home, and I'm at home, and then they call me back in, it goes under callback. But that has to meet certain requirements under how HR governs the use of callback pay. But it's typically reserved for those unforeseen emergencies. If it was something that was planned or something, then it should be overtime, or it should be another scheduling time. It should not be callback.
Thank you.
Okay. So as we dig into the financial records, as I said, everything that we're going over this evening is what we've been able to get our hands on. None of the records that we've asked for have been provided. So the documents requested on April 8th were the grand jury financial presentments as required by law for the following terms. And you can see them listed there, February, and then all of November, I mean, all of 2024. That kind of follows the rest of the records we've asked for. Bank statements for calendar year 2024 and year-to-date 2025 for the following truest bank accounts. And those 10 bank accounts are listed there. On April 9th of 2025, I sent an additional request for two other bank statements that we learned about, banked off of AmerisBank. And you can see those listed there, 7189 miscellaneous business account, and then 7163 is a sheriff's training fund. The statutory requirements for the request, we discussed this a little bit, but I wanted to go ahead and provide you the actual OCGA code section. Stakes the annual audit reports of a county or consolidated city. County government shall also contain financial statements prepared in conformity with generally accepted governmental accounting principles, providing a detailed account of the... with generally accepted governmental accounting principles, providing a detailed account of the supplemental official income and related expenditures of each county officer listed in Article, Article nine, Section one, Paragraph three A of the state constitution. And then that paragraph ends with such officer shall be obligated to cooperate with the county or consolidated government in preparation of such financial statements and audit reports, and shall provide such government with all documents the government deems necessary to prepare such financial statements or audit reports. And then the county code section, which backs that, is Clayton County Code, Article one, Section two dash ten, Subparagraph seven, which says the county and the board of commissioners has the authority to examine and audit all claims and accounts of officers having the care, keeping, and collecting or dispersing of any money belonging to Clayton County or appropriated for its use or benefit, and to bring all such officers to settlement. So I know we touched briefly on it during the last presentation, but just wanted to provide the actual statutes, and then kind of set the basis for how we move forward. So being that we haven't gotten any of the financial documents to date, we went a little bit different route to, to try and get them. So we called the district attorney to get the grand jury presentments that are required. So Georgia Code thirty-six dash one dash seven states that sheriffs of the various counties shall make a return under oath to the grand jury of their respective counties on the first day of each term of the Superior Court. The returns shall set forth a just and true statement of the amount of money belonging to the county which was received by them and the source from which the money was received, along with their expenditures, accompanied by a copy of the most recent financial statement or annual audit of the financial affairs of the county offices subject to this code section. So essentially, what this is saying is the first day of every term, the sheriff or his designee has to send a financial report and audit to the grand jury, along with a copy of what the county submits for the entire county. The, the county finance office cannot attest to the financial affairs of another division. They simply send the current audit statement for the county to the grand jury. That document doesn't go anywhere else, it's considered, and then the grand jury can decide if they want to accept it. I was sent for the November term, I believe it was, of last year, I was sent the returns by the district attorney from what the county finance department sent, and what the sheriff's office submitted. What the sheriff's office submitted was a financial certification statement that says, "We certify to the best of our knowledge, the financial records presented from finance on behalf of the county sheriff's office are accurate for the month ending July, August, and September." The challenge with these certification statements is county finance does not submit financial statements on behalf of the sheriff's office. They can't. And the reason why they can is because they don't know all the revenue and expenditures, because we know there's at least twelve bank accounts that we don't have all the information on. So for finance to say that this is a true and accurate statement would not be a truthful statement. I don't have any documentation or email chains where what county finance submitted to the grand jury was sent to the sheriff's office for their review. So I'm not really sure what was certified as the true and accurate financial returns. I'm hoping we get that as a part of the records request that we asked for. But this is all that's been certified to date. So this was kind of our last way to hopefully get the financial records that we asked for, so we could bring this to a close for you guys. Moving forward, so as we talked about the truest accounts, the CFO and the audit team was able to go back and look at a lot of the previous audits that were submitted, and was able to put together an accounting of the truest bank assets that are out there. We hope to get the bank statements to confirm these, but some of this data going back to twenty twenty is what was presented to previous auditors. And it's just kind of been tracked, and then, of course, up to the most audit before the one we're in, when the information stopped flowing into the auditors. And you can see the differing accounts, cash on hand at the end, or projected at the end of six thirty twenty twenty-four was a little over nine point five million. We did learn through some additional information that was uploaded into the auditor's portal that there's actually a thirteenth bank account that's been opened. It's an additional inmate trust account, it's labeled Clayton County Sheriff Inmate Trust two. At truest bank, we don't know the balance of that one, but some of the funds from what was presented, some of the funds from the inmate trust account from twenty twenty-three, you see it went from about a hundred and forty thousand, eight sixty-eight, down to seventy-four thousand. We assume that that's where that money went, but once again, won't know. So why is all this important? So as the board made its decision back in April for the seven million, and then wanted to go through this process of trying to understand where we stand, here's kind of where we stand. So the financial decision point for the board is what you're looking at now represents eight point three seven two million dollars worth of invoices that the sheriff's office budget does not have money to pay for. The five point nine six five, I think that's what that says up there, those are invoices in hand. The bottom level, which equates to the remainder of that balance, the two point four oh six, are anticipated invoices to come in before the close of the fiscal year. So on hand, we have to figure out where to pull eight point three seven two, five one seven point three zero to pay for these invoices. So one of the things that finance did and does, and internal audit started looking at, was going through these invoices to see exactly what are we paying, and to make sure that what we're being asked to pay is the service that's being provided. So the two that we highlighted are just two that stood out to us. So one of them is eight oh four prisoner and U.S. Corrections. So what's on your screen now is an invoice from U.S. Corrections, so these are for prisoner transports. And you can kind of see here that it has passenger name, passenger ID, tells you where they came from, where they went to, how many miles it was, what they're billing us to transport this particular inmate, and they provide an invoice per inmate. To your right is kind of a similar, this was actually a female prisoner. And you can kind of see the name, of course, is blocked out, but all the other pertinent information that tells the county what we're paying, why we're paying it, and then gives us a mechanism to track this particular inmate. When we look at the other line item, I think it was roughly about two hundred and ninety thousand that's outstanding in bills. These are the invoices for those. So if you look at prisoner transports for the month of April, it just simply says prisoner transport, tells you what they're doing, transporting of prisoners with foreign warrants, production orders, arrest orders, court orders. And you see the rest of it labeled there, a quantity of two hundred at three hundred and fifty dollars for a seventy thousand dollar invoice. But we don't know who those two hundred people are, or where they went, or where they came from, or how to verify that they were actually transported. And then the document to your right is the same invoice, but it's just for the month of March. Similar information, similar dollar figure. So, and we're in the process now of doing that with each one of these line items, just trying to understand what's out there, and is there anything that the county kind of may have caused to question before we figure out how to allocate these level of funds? So with that, I'll stop talking and do my best to answer questions.
All right, board members, I'm going to open up the floor for questions. I'll start over here to my left, Commissioner Davis.
No, I'm fine now.
Hamburg?
And maybe the sheriff can answer this question. I know with some positions, there is no overtime, like you. I mean, you know, there are positions.
Exempt, yes, ma'am.
Right, you don't, so do you all know how many employees are like that? Or is everybody?
Well, no, ma'am, so the only, if you notice, in, in the spreadsheets that I provided you this evening, it stopped at lieutenant. So not seeing a personnel roster to understand who's in what current billets or roles is hard for us to make that determination. But the system itself, exempt positions are loaded through position control into munis and into cronos through coordination with finance, because, I mean, human resources, because HR is kind of the one that sets what's exempt and what's not exempt based off all of the factors you have to consider. So if I understand correctly from HR and in the sheriff's office, captain and above are considered exempt employees, which is why you didn't see a spreadsheet for captain and above. And that may change depending on how the organization functions and what their supervisory roles do on a daily basis.
Some things were changed, changed. It was one title, but it was changed so that person could receive.
Potentially.
Okay. Okay, so with this information, with this outstanding, are we going to be able to complete our budget by the end of June, which is the law?
I'll defer that question to Ms. Jackson.
I mean, where do we stand?
My understanding is the budget committee is meeting. They're going through all the requests. Obviously, this, this amendment will have to be considered at some point. These invoices are due, some of them are a few months past due, so there's late charges that's being accrued?
See, and I was going to say, see, I don't want to get deemed, or if there's an audit of the county, you know, how in years past, we've always gotten whatever category is, what, triple A, double A, whatever we've got, which affects our borrowing power.
Yes, ma'am.
So are we anywhere close? And I guess the committee, you on the committee?
Yes.
Commissioner, let me make sure I understand your question. What he's going through now is the FY twenty-five budget. We're in the process of working on the FY twenty-six budget. Are you asking how we're ending this year, or how we're compiling the budget for FY twenty-six?
How we're compiling for twenty-six.
We met with the sheriff, he came in, he brought his contracts so that we could review them and be able to input the numbers that he has a contractual agreement for. So those numbers are in the budget, we're currently not in balance with that budget yet, we're working on it still. And that's where we are with that. But as far as ending this fiscal year, those invoices, the board will need to decide whether, and legal may have to help me with that, how we're going to pay those, if we're going to pay those, who's responsible for paying those invoices, and those types of questions.
Okay, well, okay, well, I'll just wait to June thirty.
All right, any other questions, Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Allen?
I have a statement for the budget committee. Great presentation, gave me idea. We requested the invoices and contracts from the sheriff. Now, when we do the budget, I would like to see all the contracts and all the invoices from all the departments. Everybody. That's a great idea, to look to see if that's what it will be possible, but thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Thank you, D.C. Almercasson. Next, we move to presentations, SPOS, Ongoing Budget Impact, Commissioner Elena Reeves.
We can move, we can remove both presentations on the agenda from tonight. The SPOS presentation and the agenda ordinance was presented by our senior staff attorney at the last working session.
So we're good with three and four. All right, thank you. We'll move on to public comment, Anne Courtney.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizen, sorry, citizens will be given three minutes to speak before the board with a total time of thirty minutes. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
First up will be Dr. Henry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, District three constituent and resident, unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Good evening, Sheriffwoman Mrs. Dr. Lee Anderson dash Henry. Madam Vice Chair in District one, Commissioner Ms. Elena Reeves. District three Commissioner, Mrs. Tashae Allen. District two Commissioner, Ms. Gail Hamburg. And District four Commissioner, Mr. Demont Davis. I will now explain the colored file folders, which are green, blue, orange, yellow, gray, and red, which will serve as your Clayton County Board of Commissioners dossier file folders, both individually and collectively. They will be used in your ongoing and continuous real-time evaluation process during the public comment section. First group of folders, the individual single green, blue, gray, yellow, orange, and red dossier folders, which will serve as your collective mega five, ongoing and continuous real-time evaluation file folders, whether the green folder corresponds to success, the blue folder corresponds to that an immediate response decision or action is required, the gray folder corresponds to inactivity, idleness, or inaction, the yellow folder corresponds to a warning designation that a negative, unfavorable, undesirable, and adverse evaluation is on the way, unless all five of you, our Clayton County Board of Commissioners, make the right decision and take the correct and right courses of action to remove the warning designation. The orange folder corresponds to deficiency, and the red folder corresponds to failure. Second group of folders, the individual file groupings of green, yellow, orange, blue, red, and dossier file folders, which will serve as your individual ongoing and continuous real-time evaluation file folders, whether the green folders of all five of you collectively correspond to success, the yellow folders correspond to mediocrity, the orange folders correspond to deficiency, the blue folders correspond to warning, a warning designation that a notice of failure is imminent, and the red folders correspond to failure. It would be very wise, very smart, very intelligent, and extremely prudent of all five of you, our Clayton County Board of Commissioners, to take my evaluation process very seriously, straighten yourselves up in terms of your attitudes, body language, facial look, and countenance, attentiveness, ways, actions, behavior, and conduct, where straightening up is needed and required. Do right and govern yourselves accordingly in your interactions, relations, and dealings with all of us, the good and great citizens of Clayton County, who elected all five of you to your positions of power, prestige, prominence, authority, and command as our Clayton County Board of Commissioners. As always, continue to have a very productive, great, engaging, orderly, exceptional, excellent, and outstanding rest of your Clayton County Board of Commissioners' regular business meeting on this evening, Tuesday, May the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Good day.
All right, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Next will be Mary Savage.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me, and that's going to be a little hard to follow, but I'm here on behalf of my neighborhood.
Ma'am, please, please state your name.
My name is Mary Savage, I live in Riverdale. And to be specific, I live in the Roundtree Forest subdivision, District four. Some of you, I have communicated with you in regards to what I'm about to speak on, and this is in reference to a noise nuisance, a neighbor disregarding ordinance of the county, having vehicles worked on during the nighttime, especially on weekends, making loud noises from equipment, power drills, tools. So this is going on, I live in a cul-de-sac, and I have extended myself to my neighbor, you know, reached out, sent text messages, even drove out of my garage and went there at one in the morning asking them to lower the noise, but it wasn't good. So at this point, it's really out of my hands. There's, there are also vehicles parked in the yard with no current tags on them. There are tires sitting in trucks, or a truck, that I know water has been in those tires for a long time. So that brings about another problem. And code enforcement has been there, I've seen them, I've even registered complaints online. And I got a response saying that my response was received, and there was no validation to it. So I'm not really sure what is going on, what is, what is happening, but I don't want to move out of my home after living there for thirty years. And this is not a renter, this is a home buyer who moved in two years ago. So I'm at your mercy, I don't know what, you know, can be done.
Well, thank you, Ms. Savage. What I will do is, is Ward Nelson or Major McDonald here, or someone from code enforcement? I want you to go back and speak with the code, with the code enforcement person back in the back. Yes, ma'am?
And I do have some pictures here that I'm.
You can show them to go, and I'll give a, you want a copy too?
No, Ms. Savage, ask a question. There were, we're taking care of some vehicles that had no tags out there. Is this a whole nother home?
It's possibly the same home, and I don't know rather, you know, I don't know what taking care of means, but I know the vehicles are still parked in the driveway.
Just give it to them and, and with your number, and I'll give you a call.
Thank you.
All right.
And thank you all for hearing me.
All right, thank you. Next will be Ms. Veronica Richardson. Ms. Savage, you can speak with him now. Okay.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Board members and Sheriffwoman Anderson Henry. My name is Veronica Richardson. I reside in the Roundtree Forest subdivision in Riverdale for thirty-eight years. I really came to see Commissioner Davis because I can't seem to contact him any other way. I've sent emails, texts, and everything. So I'm coming here so that, I want to know why you aren't answering my emails.
I've not received your emails, and my constituent aide Denise has contacted many folks over there, but go ahead. I'm listening.
I sent one on the fourteenth. You didn't receive that? It's about five days ago. I've sent text messages.
Pertaining to what?
What Ms. Savage is talking about.
Okay, 'cause I know.
Among other things.
Yeah, I knew where you reside.
Right, but I don't get any response from you when I try to, not just for that, for anything. I'm sorry, I'm just, uh, you know, I'm just, you know, I'm trying to figure out what's going on.
So, you can still direct it to the Board?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to figure out what's going on.
Yes, ma'am. All right.
Because, you know, I pay taxes. I just want what I pay taxes for. And, you know, I shouldn't have to go to another district commissioner to get done what I have in my district. I had to go to Ms. Allen to get a situation that's been going for two or three years, that Mr. Davis, you know, the text messages, the meetings we had, HOA meetings, none of the things that he told us when he was running in our community have, have not been done. When I went to her with the issue, it was done in a week. I'm just trying to understand. You know, as a citizen of Clayton County, can y'all help us understand, why can't, why can't we get beautification of things kept clean? I, I don't understand. And he's my commissioner, so like I said, the only way I can see him is, is to come here tonight. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. All right. Next will be Ms. Kyra. I gotta get the last name. Say your last name for me, Ms. Kyra.
Uh, Sheriffwoman, Commissioners, residents, my name is Kyra Anima Shum Ajiboye.
I gotta get that D-G.
Thank you. I'm, um, I had the opportunity to come. I came here a week ago, and I heard the ARC man. Uh, I wanted, I was, you know, I didn't know that I was not supposed to do that. But my, my thought process is this. I also saw in Facebook that you talked about ARC and some of the cities in the county, uh, getting some grants or something. And then I remembered, I mean, I was gonna say that. I remember that when I was, uh, president of my homeowners association, Roundtree Forest, when Eldrin Bell was chairman, he, uh, gave us opportunities as community members, as, um, uh, HOAs, for us to apply for grants. So I'm saying this to say that if the cities have opportunities, maybe we should also, you as chairperson can help, see how you can lower it down, so it can get to the communities. At that time, we were able to get a grant that gave us the opportunity to erect new, uh, streetlights, and the seniors were very happy because they were able to see better at night. We had to get the community to sign, over fifty percent of our community, we have about, about one-fifty homes in our subdivision, and we got them to sign up, and then we got those streetlights. We want to be able to do more because we see that a lot of decadence coming up in the community, and if we cannot really come to you, or if you guys don't have the resources, give us opportunities to get out there and to get this funding. I just wanna share that. Thank you.
All right, and thank you for that. We'll definitely be looking for some grant funding. Um, I just, I do wanna make this statement. That's an excellent, uh, idea. As we, um, get grant, grant funding, as we see things, we will definitely put them out in the community. Some of our grants are being cut, um, from the federal government at this time, but we are still fighting to make sure that we keep those grants for Clayton County. So thank you for that. All right, next will be Mickey Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Introduction: We are working for each other. You work for me, and I work for you. You hold me accountable, and so I hold you accountable. We are accountable to each other. As your watchdog, ruh, ruh, ruh. And since this meeting is for zoning, let me alert you, members of the Board. Alert: Lake Harbor Town Homes, of which we in the neighborhood were promised that they were to be three hundred thousand and up. You can't hear me?
Keep going, Mr. Garber.
Three hundred thousand and up. On the sign again, Madam Chair, has been changed to two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars, one hundred dollars short of what we were promised. Now, do you want these townhomes moved into Lake Spivey or your neighborhood? Short of what the people in my community were promised. I expect you to get in touch with the builder and have the sign changed back again. This is just a ploy to sell, sell these homes on the cheap. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Next is Timothy Von Dell Jefferson. Again, Timothy Von Dell Jefferson. Next is V. Thomas Mark, Martin. V. Thomas Martin. Well, thank you, everyone, and at this time, this ends our public comment. Um, your concerns are duly noted, and we will continue to make sure that we continue to move Clayton forward. Next, we will move on to our, um, item seven, our Consent Agenda. At this time, I need a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda.
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the Consent Agenda at this time? Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next, we will move to our regular agenda, and we will move, we will go to item thirteen, Resolution twenty-two-five dash ninety-six.
Um, Madam Chair, on that last vote, did you say it was to adopt it or was to approve?
To approve. I'm gonna say approve. I'm sorry.
Item number...
Thirteen.
Thirteen. It's Resolution twenty-two-five ninety-six, which is a resolution to designate a budget officer to provide an effective date and for other purposes.
All right. At this time, I need a motion for item number thirteen, excuse me, thirteen, Resolution twenty-two-five dash ninety-six.
So move.
All right, I second it. All right, is there any discussion at this time? Commissioner Reeves? You moved it. You didn't have it. Okay, all right. So is there, there's no discussion at this time? Board members, are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is number sixteen, Resolution twenty-two-five dash ninety-nine.
Resolution twenty-two-five ninety-nine is a resolution authorizing Clayton County through the Clayton County Senior Services Department to enter into an aging sub-grant agreement with the Atlanta Regional Commission to accept funds to expand medical and congregates' transportation for senior citizens, to authorize the Chairwoman or her designee to execute the grant agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required to provide an effective date of this resolution or for other purposes.
At this time, I need a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-five dash ninety-nine.
So move.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion at this time?
Yes. Oh, I had a, I had a question, and it might be for our senior services director. I think I saw Tori here.
Come on up, Ms. Tori. How are you today?
I'm good.
All right.
Can you talk a little bit more about this program and what it offers for our seniors?
Yes. So this is a federal grant for transportation for seniors who are sixty and older. It provides transportation for seniors to come to the senior center that are on congregate meal. Congregate meal program is also a grant, a federally funded grant program that addresses social isolation through meal service. So that is a grant-funded program. So it's kind of like a companion, companion program. So if we're gonna give you the meal, we're also gonna provide transportation for you to get to the senior center to have the meal. This money is also used to provide medical transportation for seniors who have medical appointments, cardio, cardiologist appointments, dialysis, chemo, all of those appointments.
And I just wanted to, well, one, this sounds like a wonderful program, and I just, I just wanted to highlight that this is something that the county offers for our seniors because, um, it, this is incredible. Um, and I just also wanted to confirm, um, that the thirty thousand for the county match, is that the total impact to the budget?
So we, we have a transportation coordinator, because one of the contingencies for the grant is we have to have staff dedicate, dedicated to coordinate all of the transportation services. So we have an employee, and that's their salary amount. That matches.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Awesome job. Next is eighteen, Ordinance twenty-two-five dash... I'm sorry, I'm about to go to the next one. I'm sorry.
So excited about it. It's a great program.
All right, Anne, all right, can I, are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you again. All right, next is item eighteen, Ordinance twenty-two-five dash seventy-three.
Yes, Ordinance twenty-two-five seventy-three is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County. It's amended specifically to amend Part One, related laws pertaining to Clayton County, Chapter Two Administration, Article Two Board of Commissioners, Section Two dash thirty-five Agenda, duties of the presiding officer, minutes, quorum, public comment, Section Two dash thirty-five dash zero-one Agenda to repeal any and all conflicting laws, ordinances, resolutions, rules, and regulations, to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance and for other purposes.
All right, can I get a motion at this time, Board members?
I make a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I make a motion that we approve, uh, item, uh, sorry, Ordinance twenty-two-five dash seventy-three.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion at this time? Board members, any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. All right. Next will be item number twenty, twenty-two-five dash one oh two.
Resolution twenty-two-five one oh two is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to approve a special facilities use request with Senator Gail Davenport to host the Juneteenth celebration at International Park, to authorize the Chairwoman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second at this time, Board members?
So moved.
A second?
All right. I second. Any discussion?
Is that a motion to approve?
A motion to approve, yes. You want me to say the approve part, yes. Motion to approve at this time. All right.
Oh, and I second.
All right, in the discussion? Yeah, y'all, y'all, yeah, that's good. All right, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. It's approved. Next is twenty-one, um, Board Appointment to the Community Service Board. Cadigia Works' term on the Community Service Board will expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. The new term is for three years, expiring on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight. At this time, Board members, I would like to, um, make a motion to, um, put Yasmin Neal as the, um, member on the Community Service Board. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The, the motion passes, and the ayes, and the ayes have it. Next is Board Appointment to the Community Service Board. Junior Jackson's term on the Community Service Board will expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. The new term is for three years, expiring on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight. Commissioner Reeves, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to hold that board appointment until the third June meeting.
All righty. What date? You said which board? You said next month? Next month, June, June.
The third one?
June seventeen? June seventeen?
June seventeen, yeah.
Okay. June seventeen.
Okay.
All right, we'll hold it to June seventeen. All right, next is Board Appointment to the Community Service Board. Paula Cook's term on the Community Service Board will expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. The new term is for three years, expiring on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight. Commissioner Allen, what's your pleasure?
I would like to make a motion to reappoint Ms. Paula Cook to the Community Service Board.
I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is item twenty-four, Board Appointment to the Community Service Board. Aunt Sal George Davis resigned from the Community Service Board. The existing term expires on September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-six. Commissioner Davis, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to hold that appointment until June third.
All right.
Board meeting.
I'm clear.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll be holding that to the next June third. All right, next will be Ju-, will be, excuse me, number twenty-five, Board Appointment to the Housing Authority. Robert Payne's term on the Housing Authority expired on May eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. The new term is for five years, beginning immediately and expiring on May eleventh, twenty-thirty. Commissioner Davis, what's your pleasure?
That appointment was made at the last meeting. We reappointed him the last meeting.
Okay, so we can, okay, we'll move on from that. All right, next is number twenty-six, Board Appointment to the Library Board of Trustees. Lauren Payne's, um, is fulfilling an unexpected term on the Library Board of Trustees that will expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Mrs. Payne is not, is not seeking reappointment. The new term is for four years, expiring on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-nine. Commissioner Davis, what's your pleasure?
I might also hold that one until the June third board meeting as well.
I'm clear.
Next is item twenty-seven, Board Appointment, Parks and Recreation. James Hellwood's term on the Parks and Recreation Board will expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. The new term is for four years, expiring on June thirtieth, twenty-thirty. Board members, do you all have anyone to appoint?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'd like to reappoint Mr. James Hallaroo.
Hallaroo, okay. Very good. All right, can we get the second?
I second.
All right, any discussion at this time? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is item twenty-eight, Board Appointment to the Solid Waste Management Authority. Demario Swain was removed from the Solid Waste Management Authority due to inactivity. The existing term would expire on August twentieth, twenty-twenty-six. Commissioner Reeves, what is your pleasure?
I'd like to hold that appointment until June seventeenth meeting. I'm clear.
All right, thank you. All right. Next, item twenty-one, excuse me, twenty-nine, Board Appointment to the Solid Waste Management Authority. Rob Leatherwood resigned from the Solid Waste Management Authority. The existing term will expire on July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. The new term is for four years, beginning after the existing term ends and expiring on July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-nine. Commissioner Davis, what is your pleasure?
I'm gonna hold that appointment until the June seventeenth meeting. It's gonna be hard.
June seventeenth?
Yes.
June seventeen. Next, we will move on to planning and zoning, and we will start with our public hearing for our Stream Buffer, Varian's thirty-eight fifty-one, Twin Bridge, excuse me, Twin Bridge Lane Residential Development, Community Development.
I believe this, is this community or the transportation development?
It's both.
This is for the Stream Buffer variance request, um, for Twin Ridge Lane, and I'm gonna just let the applicant explain what they're asking for.
All right.
Hey, how's it going?
Hi, how are you?
Um, we got a, um, property in an established neighborhood. Um, it already had a twenty-five-foot buffer... foot buffer established already, so what we're trying to do is, the house that we're doing, we're gonna need a fifty foot buffer as opposed to the seventy-five foot that's always required, so we're just asking if we can, um, do a fifty foot stream buffer as opposed to the seventy-five foot stream buffer.
Okay, alright, so how much time do you want to reserve for your rebuttal at this time? You, you can do two minutes, however you wanna do it.
Yeah, two minutes, two minutes, yeah, I'm sorry, knew it is.
Alright, so at this time, we, um, we wanna set it for two minutes, um, set the timer at this time, and you can go for, for your rebuttal, if you wanna say anything. Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm talking about him, Lord, I forgot. Alright, so now we're gonna move on, um, for the citizens, are there any citizens, um, who are in favor of this item?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Woman, um, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, the difference in a fifty foot buffer and a seventy-five, and if it is, what will affect, what would the effect be on whatever that property is?
They won't be able to build.
For a quick overview of the buffers, um, EPD has a twenty-five foot buffer along a stream, each side of the stream. The county through your stream buffer ordinance has a fifty foot, including the twenty-five EPD, but fifty foot, um, no disturbance buffer. Then additional twenty-five foot impervious buffer. So a development can go into that last twenty-five foot and regrade, but they can't build anything there that's, um, impervious. So they can put grass back in, they can plant trees back into that twenty-five foot, but they can't have like concrete or a structure in that area.
Okay, well, maybe I hear with the different, uh, questions or, uh, comments made with the applicant, uh, how that will affect whatever that property is, is that good, Madam?
If, as it sits today with the buffers, there's not enough space to have a buildable footprint of a, of a house, he can't build on it.
Okay.
Uh, in order even build a house, he has to get into the buffers, that's why he's requesting the variance to reduce it.
Okay, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is this some of the issues, 'cause I know over off Valley Hill, we've had some flooding issues over there in Riverdale, um, and I know these homes were built many years ago. How does this affect the flooding? Or the, the impact of flooding or?
This particular location of their request is gonna be very minor if, if any. Um, the buffers in general are set for environmental protection of your natural resources, your streams.
Okay.
Um, it, it doesn't really get into how much flooding, it gives you more space to, to encapsulate the water, if you wanna think of it that way. Um, of course, the more pervious, um, or impervious area you have constitutes for more runoff, um, but, does that answer your question?
Somewhat. Just wanted, I mean, depending on the depth of that stream as well, I mean, as far as capturing the runoff, 'cause I know behind those sort of, we've got, gotten a ton of calls about that, and it's been extremely, extremely difficult on those residents, that's why.
Each stream is different.
Different, correct.
And each watershed is different, that contributes the water to that area.
Okay.
Um, so it's difficult to apply what they're doing here to other locations.
Thank you.
So if, if he does not get the fifty foot buffer, then he can't do anything with the property, or?
If he doesn't get the variance, if the board doesn't approve the variance, um, he, essentially the lies is unbuildable for a single-family residential, and it's in the middle of a subdivision.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, alright. Next, is there anyone here in favor of this item? Again, is there anyone here in favor of this item? Alright, seeing none, is there anyone in opposition to this item? I'm gonna ask one more time, is there anyone in opposition to this item? Alright, alright, the applicant can come back up? Alright, at this time, are you, did you, did you wanna talk as far as your rebuttal now? Are you ready?
Yeah, I mean, you pretty much said it without, um.
I knew you were gonna say that too.
Without, without being able to get a variance, we won't be able to build on, on the property, so.
Okay, alright, alright, so at this time, um, Commissioner Davis, well, well, it's gonna be Community Development, okay. We've got a.
So Madam Chair, you can just say that the public hearing is closed, and then we'll move right on to item thirty-one.
Alright, this public hearing is closed, and we'll move on to, uh, the re, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one hundred.
So, um, Resolution twenty twenty-five one hundred is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to approve a stream buffer var, variance for the property located at thirty-eight fifty-one Twin Bridge Lane, Ellenwood, Clayton County, Georgia, to authorize the chairwoman or her designate to execute any documents relating thereto, and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expenses may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. And before the board votes, there's a reason why we have all of that in there, just to make sure that if there's anything that needs to be done, we don't have to come back to you all to ask for permission.
They will have to come back?
No, they do not have to come back, yes.
Alright, alright.
I make a motion that we approve the variance of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one hundred.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, any questions at this time, any discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is BOC twenty-five dash zero four seventy-nine, a conditional use permit.
As Mr.
Consulting here, thank you.
Congratulations. As Mr. McSwain, um, comes to the podium, I want to, uh, go ahead and announce the rules. Citizens may speak for and against an item, this is considered by law to be a zoning decision. East side will have ten minutes to present its case. When the time runs out, speaker will be expected to cease speaking and leave the podium. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor shall speak first. Applicants in cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent, and please remember that abusive or derogatory language will not be permitted.
So, good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, um, the Community Development Department does have some personnel announcements for everyone, as we do have some, um, personnel who are coming in. So, one, I do want to take the time to welcome, um, Ms. Kedra Jackson, she is our new planning and zoning consultant, so she will be assisting our department and the county with, with the services that she is offering as well. So, we want to take the time to welcome her back again, and secondly, or additionally, I want to also officially make known that my position here for the county as the zoning administrator, so I am thanking everybody here, and also want to move forward and continue serving everybody.
Commissioner, I have a question.
I'm not clear on, what's her name?
Yes, this, Ms. Kedra Jackson, she is, she is a consultant with the Planning and Zoning Division, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So that is all the personnel announcements that we have for you all. So we'll go ahead and allow Ms. Jackson to go ahead and present the first case for the record.
The first case before you tonight is BOC twenty-five zero-two zero-four seven-nine. This is a conditional use permit, a request from LJA Engineering for a conditional use permit for a convenience store with fuel sales at thirty-four eighty, Mount Zion Road, Stockbridge, Georgia, three zero-two eight-one. This property is located in Commission District One. The property consists of two point four-two acres or more, or less. It is Zone GB, and it's also located in the East Corridor Overlay District. You will have the parcel number in your agenda. This property is located between Cameron Landing Drive, excuse me, and Highway one thirty-eight. The Planning and Zoning Consultants has recommended denial. The zoning advisory group also recommended denial on May fifth, twenty twenty-five. So before you is a site plan of the proposed, um, development, and we'll go into the next screen. This is where the property is located. Um, as I mentioned, it is Zone General Business, also known as GB. This, uh, is the layout of the said property, and these are the elevations of the proposed development. This is the front elevations and side elevations. So as mentioned before, staff has recommended denial as well as zoning advisory group.
Thank you, is the applicant present or here today? Please come up. How are you?
Members of the commission, it's good to see you all, y'all, I hadn't seen you in a long time. I had the opportunity to meet with Commissioner Reeves this afternoon, and, uh, couldn't convince her to support this zoning, so. I have a hard time working on, but anyhow, I'd like to table them.
Did you want to table or withdraw?
Withdraw, I'd like to withdraw it.
Alright, thank you, alright. At this, can we go on?
Now what do I do?
Can we move on to the poll?
Um, yeah, since he wants to withdraw, then we can do it without a public hearing.
Okay, alright, at this time, I need.
Do she accept it?
Okay.
Okay, so I need to make a motion to accept the withdrawal. Right, I make a motion that we accept the, uh, withdrawal of BOC, uh, twenty-five zero-two dash zero-four seven-nine.
Alright, and I second the motion. Is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes, alright. At this time, um, Mr. Reed, do we have, do we have a need for executive session?
Wait, no.
Oh, we got one more? I missed a CUP.
We got thirty-three.
Okay.
Both of mine are spread out.
Mine is on, mine is, mine is flipped around, y'all, is yours flipped around too?
Mine is spread out, I have one at the beginning and one at the end.
Alright, so we're going to thirty-three, I'm gonna flip it over. Um, next we have BOC twenty-five dash zero, twenty-five oh-two dash zero-four eight-three, conditional use permit for the indoor amusement and recreation facility at fifty-four forty-two Furnish Road.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll read the case number again in the record, which is BOC twenty-five oh-two dash zero-four eight-three. The applicant is Dude and Dolly LLC. They're requesting a conditional use permit for indoor amusement and recreation facility at five four four-two Furnish Road, Unit one twenty-five, in Forest Park, Georgia, three zero-two nine-seven. The subject property consists of four point two-zero acres, more or less, and is Zone MSI, which stands for Mixed Use Commercial Industrial Zoning District, further known as the parcel listed in your agenda. This property is located at the intersection of Furnish Road and Penny Road. This property sits in Commission District Two. So before you is the layout of the subject property. This is an existing building. The applicant is seeking to obtain a suite inside of the building to do a play area or recreation area for young children. Um, if we go to the next slide, it will show you a layout how he or she wants the, um, facility to look, it will have different play areas, um, and I'll let the applicant explain to you what those play areas will consist of, um, if we can go to the next slide, please. This is the exterior of the lot, showing the parking area. Um, the applicant is not seeking to add or take away existing parking, and as you can see, the cursor, um, that's being navigated by Tyler, this is the existing parking area So this is the exterior of the building, where they will locate or have their facility. This is the zoning district, the zoning map. Um, again, the property is Zone MSI, Mixed Use Industrial. They are not planning to change the zoning, they would just need the CUP for the recommended or the requested use here. This is an aerial view of the property, as you can see where the red marker is, is where the property is located. So staff recommendation is approval, exact, um, that did recommend approval, but they did place conditions on the property. The conditions read, one, they must have security on site during operating hours, two, they must comply with the Clayton County Noise Ordinance if music is played during playtime, three, there must be shared, uh, parking agreement with the surrounding businesses during special event hours. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, is the applicant present here today? Again, is the applicant here or present today?
It appears the applicant is not here, um, staff would like to ask that we table this to the next meeting. If you allow this recommendation?
Yes.
You good for taking one, Commissioner? You asking me?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Alright, so we'll table it, um, to the, we'll table it to our next, uh, meeting, which will be.
June seventeenth.
June seventeenth, okay.
Question?
Mm-hmm.
Can we accept that without the applicant's approval?
Being here? No.
Probably.
Um, so you have two options, I mean, you could move forward without the applicant's, uh, presence and make a decision, or you can table it. They're not here to, to make a decision one way or the other, um, but if you table it, you still will need a motion and a vote.
Okay, alright, Commissioner.
Uh, yes, I move that we table, uh, number thirty-three, BOC dash two-five zero-two dash zero-four eight-three, CUP.
Alright, I second it, alright, is there any discussion?
Until, until?
Until June seventeenth.
Thank you. I second it, is there any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is item thirty-four, to accept the public improvements as indicated on the final plaque for the Norman Drive Town Home Subdivision.
Good evening again, um, this item is for a final plat, again, for the record, this is for the county to accept the street acceptance for, uh, the final plat for Norman Drive Town Homes Subdivision. Um, this request has gone before the Clayton County's, uh, Technical Review Committee. Um, with that review, they have passed, and we have received the street acceptance letter from the Transportation and Development Department, so our recommendation is approval, and we have the signatures to be signed after this meeting.
Alright, at this time, can I get a motion for approval?
Uh, yes. I move that we accept, um, the final plat for the Norman Drive Town Homes Subdivision.
Alright, I second that motion, is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next is thirty-five L S, L S dash twenty-five oh two dash zero one seven one final plat.
Okay. Again, L S two-five zero two zero one seven one. Again, this is a final plat in the street acceptance for the Lake Harbin Town Homes, which is located in Commission District One. This request is for a sixty-single-family attached townhomes for property located at twenty-nine fifty-one Lake Harbin Road in Marlboro, Georgia. This request has gone before the Technical Review Committee and has received approval from the reviewing body. And now it's here before you all for the street acceptance, which has been accepted and forwarded by the Transportation Development Department. Our recommendation is for approval and the signature of the final plat.
All right. At this time, I need a motion.
Madam Chair, may I say so?
No, no, sir. No, sir. Please have a seat. Thank you, Mr. Gar. All right. At this time, I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve L S twenty-five zero two dash zero one seven one.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion at this time, board members?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Reed?
Oh, I just had a question for Tyler. Can you explain the process of why the county has to accept the final plat for subdivisions?
Okay. In the, to answer that question, in the process of a residential subdivision, one, we do subdivide the property after it's rezoned, if it's properly zoned for that. After site development process has been completed, before an L D P is issued, they will clear the land and install all the infrastructure. And once that process has been completed, they're coming back before the permits are issued, they will get this process completed by getting the street acceptance to formally adopt the infrastructure that's been installed for the development.
And then can you clarify the L D P for folks?
Land Disturbance Permit.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Davis?
The maintenance bond. Who's responsible for this bond and what is this bond actually doing?
So, we're gonna have an explanation of that provided by T and D.
It covers the public infrastructure, the roads, the curb and gutter, the asphalt drainage systems. Typically, it's for two years to make sure there's no defects in the initial construction of the, of the public infrastructure.
And who's responsible for payment of this bond?
The developer.
Is this county or the developer? And if he basically does not pay this bond, who, who then becomes the ultimate holder of it?
Um, I believe we have the bond before we even get to this stage.
Okay.
And T and D inspects before that two-year window expires to make sure any maintenances through the warranty period are performed by the developer before it expires.
So the developer's paying for the work and paying for this bond.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions at this time? Are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next will be item thirty-six B O C dash twenty-two, twenty-four ten, that's zero four five nine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request from Williams Scotsman Incorporated for a Conditional Use Permit for Warehouse and Storage, Repair, Refurbishment, and Cleaning Trailers and Furniture owned by a Modular Space and Storage Solution Leasing Company at thirty-six forty Grants Road, Grant's Road, Ellenwood, Georgia, three zero two nine four, which is Zone H I, stands for Heavy Industrial Zoning District. The subject property consists of thirty-nine point sixty-one acres. It is known as parcel number one-two-two four-four B A zero-zero-one, located between I six seventy-five and East Tanner's Church Road. This property is located in Commission District One. So before you is the zoning map of the subject property. That was just read into record for you. As mentioned, the property is Zone H I, which stands for Heavy Industrial. This is an aerial map of the subject property. As you can see, there is an existing parking, it's not a parking lot, but I guess you can call it a parking lot. But as you can see, it dead ends there. The next slide is the future land use map of the subject property. And here, this is the pictorial view of what you just saw of the aerial map, of what it actually looks like. So basically, what the applicant is seeking to do is place modular storage units there. Staff has recommended a denial. Zach also recommended a denial.
Is the applicant present today?
Thank you.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm good. How are you doing?
All right. Awesome. How much of the ten minutes would you want to reserve for your rebuttal?
I would like to reserve five. I may be able to get done quicker than that, so whatever time I have left, I'd like to reserve.
Okay.
But before I start, I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to load on the screen.
That's what I have. Okay.
They, they already loaded it on the computer.
Did you give it a name?
In the meantime-
Please state your name.
In the meantime, my name is Harold Buckley, twenty-eight forty-nine, Paces Ferry Road in Atlanta. I am here before you this evening on behalf of Williams Scotsman, or Will Scott for short. And I have with me Ellen Smith, who represents the property owner. We are the tenants in this relationship on this property. If we can go to the next slide. The situation that you're presented with this evening is a little different than what you typically are presented with because usually we're talking about a new industrial operation wanting to come into Clayton County. To the contrary, Will Scott has been not only in Clayton County, but in District One for thirty years, operating their business. They specialize in leasing modular building trailers. What I'm showing you on this slide is their former location, which was in Lake City, at the corner of North Parkway and Harper Drive. That is where they have been operating, like I said, for thirty years. They recently were forced to vacate that property because the landowner sold it and the purchaser chose not to continue with our lease. So that is why we have been forced from this location. But we did operate for three decades there without community complaint about trucks, traffic, or anything. And you'll notice that across the street, there's a sizable residential development known as the Flats. So we are, or have, operated in very close proximity to residential for a very long time without causing a problem for our residential neighbors. There's a little lag. This is the property that's the subject of our application this evening. You can see that it is at the dead end of East Tanner Church Road. The, the property is already developed with a truck parking lot, and that is because this body, back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, approved the Conditional Use Permit to allow this property to be used as a truck parking and trailer storage facility. So that's what that development or those improvements were built for. That, that party was unable to actually commence operating because they needed a variance and they did not get it. And so that's why that business never got up and running at that location, and while we're now proposing to go to that property. As Kedra told you, we are zoned Heavy Industrial. And if you look at the top of that image, you see a gray area. That's because our property literally backs up to the DeKalb County line. So everything in gray behind us is DeKalb County. The purple areas on that zoning map are Heavy Industrial, just like our zoning. You see the green, that is a subdivision that is near the back of our site. It's the Brookgate subdivision. And so our location is at the edge of an industrial district that's very well established. This is the site plan for our development. As I said, we are not planning to make any physical changes to the existing parking lot, except for what you see in those three boxes. We plan to put four small buildings at the front of the property to facilitate our business. Now, to be clear, this is not going to be a customer-facing operation. So you will not have customers coming in and out of this property. Instead, the leases are arranged at a different location. Then the leasing order is sent to this facility, or they will be. And then the modular trailer will be loaded onto a flatbed and taken to wherever the lease location is. At the bottom of the screen, to the right, that bright most red square is going to be our administrative offices. In the middle, you have the value-added building. That's where we refurbish the equipment and the furniture that we provide as part of our leasing services. Right in front of that is a small employee break building. And then the left square is for our maintenance facility, where in between leases, we will repair and maintain the modular building trailers. Now, one thing to keep in mind is that this site is zoned Heavy Industrial. I know the staff has recommended denial because they have found our use to be incompatible with Heavy Industrial. But when you look at the uses that are already approved to be conducted on this site without having to come to you or anyone else for a specific approval, they, they include uses that are much more intense-
Thank you. Sorry, your time is-
Than how are you. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone here in favor of this item?
We go to opposition.
We go to opposition, okay. Is there anyone in opposition of this item?
Good evening. My name is Beverly Miller, and I live in the Grant Forest subdivision, which is diagonal to this property. I'm in opposition. We attended, me and a neighbor, attended the zoning meeting earlier this month, and we have concerns about the safety. I know they said that there is not customer-facing, but there are still modular units that are coming and going. This is down Tulane Road. While it's, the address is on Grant Road, the entrance is on Williamson Road. So you've got subdivisions that are surrounding this on three sides. I don't see any benefit to the residential areas. You were talking about four subdivisions that are surrounding this. So I respectfully request that you deny this as recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else here who is in opposition of this item?
Yeah.
All right. Please come up to the podium and state your name and county of residence.
Henry Anderson, District Three, constituent and resident, unincorporated, Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Madam Chairwoman, Mrs. Dr. Lea Anderson, dash Henry, I would like respectfully to ask why the denial, the reason for the denial from the planning and zoning consultant and the zoning advisory group, since it wasn't really specified. And after that, if you grant that, because they didn't say the denial, if they can do that, I would say the, their decision should be respected, and it is my sincere hope. Vice Chairwoman, Vice Chair, District One Commissioner, Ms. Elena Reed, that the petition, the petition will be denied based on the citizen that came before me, which would be a success in your planning and zoning folder, as well as the rest of your colleagues on the Clayton County Board of Commissioners. If they can state the reason, I would greatly appreciate it for the denial.
All right. Is there anyone else who is in opposition of this item?
Madam Chair, I'd like to say so.
Come up to the podium and state your name and county of residence.
Mickey Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. I would just like for y'all to know, this is a prime example of what is plaguing Creighton County. Why you can't move forward, backwards, up, or down. With zoning, you have no transition area from people to industrial. And that's your problem. You've got to get out of this mindset. On the other hand, this property is zoned, Heavy Industrial. And this would be the, the movement of these so-called trailers. I would believe they would be used for FEMA for housing people, you know, in areas that were devastated by storms or flooding or something. And given the use, the Heavy Industrial use would be the least obtrusive to these people who live in this subdivision. This property could have an asphalt plant put on it because it is zoned, Heavy Industrial. Again, I'd like to say this is the prime example of the plague of Clayton County. But I really can't deny this man has used for the property because it's zoned that way. Thank you for my inetness here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who's, who's in opposition of this item? Please state your name and your county of residence. Thank you.
Greetings, Commissioner. Madam Vice Chair, Regina Deloche, unincorporated, Rex. I agree with the residents. Those trailers that are gonna come in and out of that Tulane Road is gonna impede traffic, and you're gonna be competing with mortar buses. You're gonna have those tractor trailers. We're already coming off Williamson and Grant, so that is not gonna be a good use of that road. And also, we're gonna continuously devalue those homes in that area. So we're asking that you keep it as denial, as stated by the board. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who is in opposition of this item? Again, is there anyone else here who is in opposition of this item? All right. We'll move on. Would the applicant please come up?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a couple of points in rebuttal. First, we have our site plan up on the screen. East Tanner Church Road dead ends right at our doorstep, so we would expect that the, the trips that the trucks make to our facility would be from that road. So for example, exiting our property, we would expect them to go south on East Tanner Church Road to Williamson Road, right where it meets Anvil Block Road. And then they would enter the highway at that point in time. On the way from here to there, they would pass an auto salvage yard, they would pass a trucking company, and they would pass a warehouse. Because this roadway is an industrial road. That's all this long, that road is industrial. Number two, I teed up my rebuttal at the end of my main presentation. This use, counterintuitively, if you approve it, would turn down the intensity of the industrial operation on this property. If the truck parking and trailer storage operation is allowed to go in there, you're talking about dozens and dozens of truck trips to and from this property every single day. That's because trailers are designed to move and to move frequently. We're talking about modular trailer buildings. And so on a good day, we're talking about three or four, three or four trucks all day going in and out of that property. That is a dramatic reduction in the amount of truck trips that this community would otherwise experience if someone were to pick up that use permit and continue that previously approved use. Also, excuse me. Again, this is not an unknown quantity. We have been in District One for thirty years, and none of you have heard anything about us. That's because our use is so innocuous that it doesn't cause disruptions, further supporting the argument that putting this use here would be a less intense industrial use. Some of the other uses that could be allowed by, right, you heard about the asphalt manufacturing, chemical manufacturing and production, like the bio- chemical manufacturing and production, like the bio lab facility in Rockdale County that we've been hearing about, all they'd have to do is go pull permits, they wouldn't have to get zoning approval. A smelting plant could go in here by right with no application before this body. A garbage incinerator is allowed under Heavy Industrial, and it's really counterintuitive and inconsistent planning logic to say, those uses are so compatible under our Heavy Industrial use that they can just go in by pulling permits and getting a business license, but our modular building trailer storage facility is so out of whack with what's intended by Heavy Industrial zoning that we shouldn't be allowed to go in there. And so for those reasons, we would very respectfully ask for you to approve our application.
Thank you. Commissioner Reeves, what is your pleasure at this time?
I have a few more questions for the applicant.
Okay.
Is that allowed? Can you, one more time, go over and, if you can, pinpoint the entryways for the facility as well as the truck routes? I know you had mentioned them, but can you say specifically what roads the trucks would
That entrance right there? Do you see this existing curb path? That existing curb path is how our property would be accessed from, I'm not doing that, from Grant Road. So there is no side entrance to the property, there is no rear entrance to the property, it's that existing driveway from Grant Road. In addition to that, you see East Tanner Church Road? That is the road that I said dead ended right at our entrance driveway? I don't have an image that goes all the way down to Anvil Block, but this road, East Tanner's Church, goes within, I would say, a tenth of a mile of Anvil Block, and then it intersects with Williamson. If you get to Williamson and you take a right and continue south-
Six seventy-five.
-you will hit Anvil Block Road and six seventy-five.
And how many trucks did you anticipate would be on the road per day?
Three to four, five on a super-heavy day.
And what are the sizes? Can you, can you give approximate sizes of what those trucks would be?
I don't have exact dimensions, but what I can tell you is, for example, for the existing warehouse, those big eighteen-wheel tractor trailers are much bigger than the trucks that we load our modular trailers on the back of.
Thank you.
Again, Commissioner Reeves, what's your pleasure at this time?
Oh, I have more questions.
You've got more questions?
Well, I have questions for staff. Hey Tyler, congrats on the position.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So during the presentation, I saw on the map of the future, what's the, on the future land use map, what is the designated zoning district for this parcel?
Yes, Commissioner, the future land use map designation is Mixed Use Commercial and Industrial, short for MXI.
But it's currently, okay, currently zoned for, currently zoned for Heavy Industrial, but the future land use map has it at Mixed Use Industrial?
That's correct. The MXI designation is designated for a mixture of compatible uses, so there's a mixture of things that need to go along. It's not a standalone for a standalone type of use, it's just a mixture, that's the intent of the, of that land use designation.
Okay, and when would that land use designation go into effect?
I'm sorry?
For the future land use, for the mixed industrial, when would that go into effect?
That's already in effect, that was established during the 2039 Comprehensive Plan, so that, it's trying to achieve a type of use to go in that particular property, but currently as it's zoned, it's zoned Heavy Industrial, so if the use were, to be there, it has to fall under the zoning district requirements, but if there's a new development or something that's coming, that have to be compatible with the policies of the MXI. And we have, okay. So I'm just relating to note that the MXI is not compatible with the Heavy Industrial standalone zoning district. So that's part of the staff's recommendation, I know that that was a question about staff's recommendation, that was part of the denial, that it's not consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. In addition to that, the Zone Advisory Group recommended denial based upon concerns that it is near a gateway of a residential community, and there was concerns regarding the welfare of the community in that aspect, so ZAG did recommend denial due to the exposure of residential land uses and truck traffic on a narrow road.
Okay, and then can you explain the process for permitting and developments, sorry, can you explain the process for permitting developments within the zoning district? So the applicant mentioned that it's, and you'll still have to help me understand, it's currently zoned Heavy Industrial, and I have a list of the permitted uses for Heavy Industrial. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Okay, so before we answer that, I think there was a statement that our consultant's going to provide.
Mr. D.K., did you want to come up and clarify things?
Hi, my name is Mary Darby, I'm the Planning Administrator with Community Development, and I just wanted to correct some of the information that was provided. MXI in the land use classification is not compatible with Heavy Industrial. We created the MXI district in our 2039 adoption of the Comprehensive Plan as that transitional zone from residential into the industrial. So the MXI, which is Light Industrial, it's Mixed Use Light Industrial, it's not compatible or consistent with the zoning, that's the one thing. The other thing is, the type of uses that were mentioned that are allowed in the HI district, they have to be, come through a conditional use permit, or if it's not listed in our permitted uses, it's not allowable use. So right now, it's not consistent or compatible of where the county is trying to go with the 2039 Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you. You have any more questions, Commissioner Reeves?
Attorney, I don't, I don't know, am I allowed to acknowledge, can the applicant come back up? I don't-
If you have questions.
I'd like to make a motion to table this item. I make a motion to table BOC twenty-four one zero dash zero four five nine until the June seventeenth Board of Commissioners meeting.
Can I get a second on that, Board members?
Second.
All right, any discussion at this time? All right, are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. This now ends our zoning, and do we have any-
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have any need for executive session at this time?
Madam Chair, before that, I wanted to make two corrections on the agenda.
Go ahead, okay.
For item number twenty-six, the Library Board of Trustees, the term is for three years, not four years, so that term expiration date will be June thirtieth, 2028, and not June thirtieth, 2029. For item number twenty-seven, that year for the term expiration is 2029.
Madam Chair, we need an executive session on litigation and personnel.
All right, all right, Board members, can I get a motion to go into executive session for litigation and personnel?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All right, in discussion at this time, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. All right, at this time, I need a motion to return from executive session.
So moved.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
In discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? And the ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Once again, hello to the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. This is a request from Human Resources on behalf of Superior Court. Per civil service rules, we are requesting to hire Ms. Sasha Green as an adult mental health court program coordinator at a salary of seventy-five thousand dollars. The current salary is sixty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars, but per civil service, with the Clayton County's Board of Commissioners' approval, we can hire at a higher salary. This will be a cost of fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars. I do want to note for the record that this is a grant-funded position, the fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars request is for funding from the General Fund.
I have a question. Yeah, I have a question before the, grant-funded positions covered under civil service?
Yes, ma'am, that's a question that we get a lot. Our part-time individuals, well, not individuals, our part-time Clayton County family members, they are covered under civil service as well, to a certain extent. They just do not have the appeal process like the civil service protected employees have. The Act creates an entire personnel system for all employees employed under Clayton County. So yes, ma'am, when it comes to us setting compensation, when it comes to us putting them in the comp system, all of that is the same. The only difference for those who are not civil service protected, if they are terminated, if they are suspended, demoted, they don't have civil service rights to bring it to the Civil Service Board. But yes, ma'am, the Act created a person, a system, a personnel administration for Clayton County.
Any other questions at this time? All right, are you ready for the, I need a motion at this time? Are you ready?
We do what now?
A motion.
Oh.
Y'all wake up.
I wondered where you were going. I thought we heard that, okay. Didn't we already?
We just, we got to do a motion.
I move that we approve, what is it, mental health, a position with the increased pay.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any more discussion at this time? All right, are we ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes.
And I cannot leave the podium without saying hello to my Clayton County citizens as well, so thank you all.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Ambrose. All right, at this time, anything else? All right, at this time, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, in discussion at this time, are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the meeting is adjourned as of nine fourteen P.M. Have a wonderful night, everyone, thank you.